Okay, we're going to go ahead and get started. So we'll go ahead and call the hearing to order. My name is Joseph Doraq. I'm an Assistant Attorney General in the Open Government Division at the Office of the Attorney General, and I'm just serving as the hearing officer for the public hearing today. The purpose of this hearing is for the Attorney General to receive public comment on proposed rules which are located in Title I, Chapter 24, Part 25 of the New Mexico Administrative Code. And we welcome anyone who's provided written comments prior to this hearing during the public comment period, and anyone who's here to provide written or oral comments today. The hearing is being conducted in accordance with the provisions of the State Rules Act, and the hearing is being recorded. It's being audio recorded, just so everyone understands. After the hearing is finalized and the record is compiled, a copy of the record of today's proceeding will be available through the Office of the Attorney General posted to the Sunshine Portal. The New Mexico Lobbyist Regulation Act regulates activities and rulemaking proceedings, and the New Mexico Secretary of State's office can be contacted for information and questions regarding registration. Public notice of this hearing was advertised in the New Mexico Register, the Albuquerque Journal, the New Mexico Sunshine Portal, and the Attorney General's website and office. Copies of the proposed rule changes have been available on the Attorney General's website, at the Santa Fe, Albuquerque, and Los Cruces offices of the Attorney General, and also through link provided in all the other electronic notices. Printed copies of the proposed rules are available today. They're at the table in the back of the room, near the door. And we've also asked that anyone in attendance today please sign in on the attendance sheet located at the table in the back of the room, which will be entered into an exhibit of the record of today's hearing at the end of the day, or excuse me, the end of the hearing. So just a couple preliminary procedures, housekeeping items, to understand how the rule's going to be conducted. We'll proceed in the following manner. I will start by announcing all the written comments received prior to today's hearing and admit those written comments into the record as exhibits. Exhibits admitted into evidence are available for review, but may not be removed from this room. All of these public comments are available already on the Attorney General's website. On the homepage, there's a link that says "Rulemaking," and under that link, there's a link to all of the public comments. And pursuant with the State Rules Act and our proposed rules, all of the public comments are compiled into the formal record and will be posted to the Sunshine Portal and available through a link on the Attorney General's website. After all exhibits are entered, at least the preliminary exhibits that we've already received, we'll proceed in numerical sequence through the proposed rule, section by section. And to clarify, the proposed rule has Sections 1 through 15, so there's 15 different sections it will address. After introducing each section of the proposed rule, I will open the floor for public comments. This hearing is not subject to the judicial rules of evidence, however, in the interest of efficiency and clarity of the record, I reserve the right as the hearing officer to limit any testimony deemed irrelevant, redundant, or induly repetitious. And for the record, would, just so we can get your name clear, anyone who's intending to testify, if you don't mind going ahead and letting us know your name so we can make sure it's recorded properly in the record. So we'll just go in the front. If you intend to testify, and we may ask if, Heather, if you don't mind keeping everyone's name, and we'll get your spelling if necessary.
Matthew Ortiz, Commission of Public Records, Administrative Law Division.
Okay, great, thank you.
Oh, you're, if I should, you're, what are you, I look at hard here, so.
If you're intending to provide public comment, just stating your name to the record.
My, my name is Chris, C-H-R-I-S. Michelle's, M-E-C-H-E-L-S.
Good, thank you.
I'm a retired citizen.
Thank you.
I don't have any comments.
Okay. We'll go to the next row.
My name's David Black. I'm an Associate General Counsel for the Public Regulation Commission.
Thank you, David.
And my name's Lindsay Cutler. I'm a staff attorney with the New Mexico Center on Law and Poverty.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Okay, can you repeat your last name for me? Lindsay Cutler. Thank you. I'll see you right now.
My name's TJ Torreille. I'm a law firm, Gallagher &amp; Kennedy, will be a testimony on behalf of the Association of Commerce and Industry, as well as the New Mexico migrant association.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so, thank you for that. That'll help the record, if you clarify who's commenting. So, in order to ensure that the hearing is accurately recorded, only one person shall be allowed to speak at a time, so we have a clear record for today's hearing. And any person recognized to speak is asked each time that they comment on each section to identify yourself by name, so the recorder picks that up each time you testify, and also speak loudly and clearly so that the recorder can pick up your comments. We're actually going to ask anyone who's wanting to test, provide oral comments for each section, to come up to the front table, and you can have a seat here. If more than one of you are sitting together, we can get more chairs, but we just want to make sure that we can hear the comments clearly.
I'm gonna, Mr. Michelle's, are you, are you hearing okay?
Pretty, yeah, norm, I'm close. It's edgy. Some things I have trouble with, most of them.
Do you want to come up a little, if we put a table up closer, would that be helpful to you?
I think I'll be okay. That's why I'm sitting in the front room, but.
Okay.
Well, I'm not having a lot of problem, but occasionally if I have to ask for a third case, I hope you won't, um, bear with me.
Yeah, absolutely.
And if you would just slow down a little bit, that might be easier.
Okay. I'll make sure to slow down and speak up.
You both have fairly clear voices, I don't know.
Okay.
Okay. But please let us know if you, if you can't hear any of the hearing.
I don't.
Okay, so, as a preliminary matter, I'm going to go ahead and introduce the following documents into the record as marked exhibits. They'll be used as reference in case anyone needs to reference them through the, through the hearing, and ultimately, these will be re-scanned as, as part of the formal record, even though almost all of these are already on the website, on the Attorney General's website. So, Exhibit number one, which has been pre-labeled as a copy of the proposed rule, the exact same format that's available at the back, at the back table, and so that's Exhibit One. Exhibit... Go, get out of order. Exhibit two is the notices of the original hearing for the proposed rule change scheduled for December 4th, 2017, and also included in that is the notice of termination of the original rulemaking, which was scheduled for December 1st.
Fourth.
Excuse me, 4th. And then Exhibit 2A is a notice posted in the Albuquerque Journal on December 4th, which included a notice of the termination of the prior rule hearing, as well as a new notice for the rule hearing scheduled for today. Exhibit number three is the legal notice for this hearing, published in the New Mexico Register on December 12th, 2017. Exhibit four is the notice published to the New Mexico Sunshine Portal on November 30th, 2017. It's a screenshot and copy of the, of the notices on the Sunshine Portal. Exhibit number five is a screenshot and notices of, from the Office of the Attorney General's website, which was posted on November 29th, 2017. Exhibit number six is the notice, the updated notice, published on November 29th, 2017, at the reception areas of the Santa Fe, Albuquerque, and Los Cruces offices of the Attorney General. Exhibit seven is the email notice provided to the Legislative Council Service on November 29th, 2017. And the following written comments were received during the public comment period prior to the hearing. Exhibit number eight is comment received from Chris Michelle's in an email string dated November 6th through November 29th, 2017. Exhibit nine is comment received from Sally Belanter, Counsel at the Construction Industries Division and Manufactured Housing Division, dated November 27th, 2017. Exhibit 10 is comment received from Jason Espinoza, President and CEO of the New Mexico Association of Commerce and Industry, dated November 29th, 2017. Exhibit 11 is comment received from Roderick Ventura, General Counsel of the New Mexico Educational Retirement Board, dated January 3rd, 2018. Comment number 12 is, or excuse me, Exhibit number 12 is comment received from Chris Michelle's in an email dated January 15th, 2018, with two attachments. And I believe there were three attachments, but one was a duplicate. Correct? It was a PDF and a Word document.
No, that is not correct.
Okay.
She only posted one attachment. There were actually two attachments.
Correct.
There were two different forms of the same comments, because they read quite differently. One of them, one of them, people might, they're provided because one of them, people might find one to the other them much more, much more clear, I'm counter. I provided the two different forms because they're in different formats, so some people might find the one much more clear than others. That's why I provided both of them.
Okay.
I, I invited her by email to, as to why it wasn't put up. This is.
So, we, we can leave the record to allow for, I know that there, there were three attachments in the first email. One was a, a PowerPoint presentation, and then there was one PDF and one Word document. I know that we were unable to wa, open the Word document because of the formatting, so we were able to download and print the PDF.
I invited her to, to, to approach me if she had trouble with that third document.
Okay.
It's an old doc format. Some people have trouble with it, some don't. But I didn't hear from her. I contact, tried to contact her to click, clarify that, couldn't contact, couldn't reach her, but emailed her forms.
Okay, well, we can leave the record open to allow for that to be included in, certainly. Exhibit three, or excuse me, 13 is comment received from Chris, Chris Michelle's in an email dated January 16th, 2018, with two attachments. Exhibit 14 is comment received from the New Mexico Center on Law and Poverty and 20 undersigned organizations or individuals in an email dated January 18th, 2018.
Pardon, pardon me?
Yes.
Just a quick check, I'm pretty sure, did you say attachment 13, or Exhibit 13 was my email of the 16th?
Correct.
Because I didn't see that online.
Um, I, well, it should have been updated, so if it's.
I checked yesterday evening, and it wasn't online.
I think at about 8:00 PM.
Oh, yeah, I tried to contact her, I couldn't.
We had our IT staff working until about 9:00 o'clock.
Oh, okay. I didn't check this morning. I'm glad, I'm glad it got online, because it's a flirt.
Yeah, they should all be, they should all be on there. Exhibit 15 is comment received from Jason Espinoza, President and CEO of the New Mexico Association of Commerce and Industry, dated January 18th, 2018. And I believe that this was a duplicate of the same correspondence received from November 29th, but we included both. Exhibit 16 is comment received from the State of New Mexico Energy, Minerals, and Natural Resources Department, dated January 18th, 2018. Those are all the written comments received thus far. During the hearing today, we will allow for additional written comments to be submitted along with oral comments. If any comments were emailed to our office before the hearing today, for example, something came in this morning, and we didn't see it, we will certainly accept those and include them in the record as well. And they'll be included in the, the final, complete record.
So the comments must be, or the record has to be submitted by today, not like 10 days after?
No, the, the comment period, I think technically went until yesterday, but we're accepting comments through today as part of the hearing. Although, I, I mean, if there was a, a certain issue, I think we can extend the comment period, but we would, we need to, to let the public know that that was an extension of the comment period, but it wasn't something that was indicated in the notice. But if that's an issue, you should raise it now so we can address it, if it's a concern.
I'd really do it.
Okay. Okay, so we're now going to proceed into the comment period.
Call, just.
Yes.
I'm sorry, how would you like to be addressed? Just Joe or hearing officer?
Uh, anything's, anything's fine. Yeah, no, formalities are not necessary, although if that makes you more comfortable.
Well, Mr. Vork.
Okay, that's, that's fine, too. As long as it's not a "hey you," because I won't know who you were talking to.
That's, okay. Before, before we proceed, I, there's a couple procedure, procedure matters I'd like some clarity on, which might be helpful to the other, other people here also.
Um, well, we're going to talk a little bit about the, the comment procedures before we open the floor for comments.
Okay.
If that, so that might address some.
Yeah, but before we get into the body of, of your proposal.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll now proceed with oral public comment on the proposed rule. Any person wishing to testify or submit evidence, written comment, shall do so only after they are recognized. Any document offered as part of this hearing shall be introduced, and questions may be asked before admitting any exhibit. So I, I'll admit the exhibit, and we'll number it to make sure that the, the record is clear. Upon admissibility, each exhibit will be marked, numbered, and entered into the record. At this time, each proposed rule change will be introduced section, introduced by section or sections, just because the first five sections don't have a lot of substantive materials, we're going to introduce those as a block, Sections 1 through 5, and then after that, we'll go section by section to receive public comments. Questions may be asked of individuals offering comment during the hearing. When we reach the end of the hearing, there will be a final opportunity to make any additional comments on the proposed rule. So, we can begin with the first Sections 1 through 5, but if, Mrs. Michelle's, if you wanted to make a, a general comment, we can do that kind of as a precursor to those sections.
Yes, I think, one of the things I would, to work, one of the things I would like some, some, to clarify, to clarify to the interest of myself and the other participants is, the hearing process, as I, I'm just verifying what I understand is, is can be found in the content of my emails, which are one of the exhibits, is that the process of using today for this, to govern this hearing, is the process that has been proposed.
Um, yes.
That is correct.
Yes.
Okay, for the record, we are using the proposed process as the process for this hearing.
Yes, as a, as a framework.
I'm emphasizing that because I totally disagree with doing that, and I proposed using an existing process of which there are, there are existing well-known processes lying around in statutes, which we could have used, and which I suggested. One of them obviously would be from the Administrative Procedures Act, another one would be from the ULA Act. So we are using, we're flying, we're flying an untested aircraft here. We're using a proposal as the process, which I think is, can be criticized and is highly controversial to do that. Okay? So I'm just on record that that, that's what we're doing, because I was assured that is the case. The other, the other issue I would raise is, I've asked repeatedly, prior to this hearing, as to who the hearing officer would be. That was never shared with me. I didn't know until I walked into the door. I think that is outrageous. It's like, let's have a trial, and we'll tell you at, when you walk in the door, who the judge is. I see no reason that that should be the case, so unless you learned today, this morning, that you were going to be hearing officer and didn't know prior to that, which I rather doubt is the case, you should have advised us on such questions as that fact that you would be the hearing officer. I really regret that you didn't do that. That is intentional, I see that as intentional misinforming or keeping the public in the dark. That is very unattractive. Thank you.
Yeah, address.
Should, why, I was going to address the prop, just to clarify what the process of this hearing is.
Okay, because in terms of the actual hearing officer for today's hearing, one of the reasons why we did not announce who that would be is because we hadn't decided who that would be.
Until this morning?
Until, actually, yesterday, we talked about who was going to do that, whether Joe was going to do that, whether I was going to do that, or whether there would be another lawyer in the office who was going to do that.
I, I appreciate that comment, because if you had that, if it was in fact unknown, you might have shared that with me in response to my per, to say, "We don't really know. We're trying to decide." Because by giving me no response, the appearance is that you just don't want me to know. You see the difference?
Sure.
If you just say, "We don't know," we haven't talked about it yet, that's a very different response.
Sure.
The other, the other point I would like to take, and I don't know if this is, correct me if this is not the point you want to take this up, the content of, of this exhibit, my email of the 16th and the attachments, one of the things that I, one of the things that I, that I brought, I raised in that, in that submittal, was the question of legality of this hearing. And I think, and what I would like, is to, is to, is to make sure that you've looked at the content of that, and that you're making a ruling, I mean, that you're making a decision to proceed in the face of what is offered as in that, in that exhibit, because I raised significant issues as to whether this, as whether this hearing complies with the Rules Act, and also, in, in three, in three major ways. It appears that you haven't complied with the Rules Act as far as, as far as advising the public of the content of this hearing, which requires a summary to be provided and a description of what's taking place. You don't appear to be in compliance. I raised this issue in my December, in my November mailings, and I raised it again when, for this, for when the hearing was rescheduled. You had an opportunity to correct that, what I take to be a serious flaw, in when you rescheduled the hearing. You could have corrected it at that point by just simply providing that information. It was chosen not to do that. I don't understand why. The other thing, the other issue that was raised, the other issue that was raised, which was the hearing process. I really don't understand why we're proceeding, flying an untested hearing process, which is in fact not except, not, not agreed to by the, by the, by the, by the members, I mean, members of the public here. The other thing is, the other issue that was raised in November was the fact that this, the notice of this hearing wasn't posted on the Sunshine Portal. That failure to post was so clear that I think it was finally what caused the hearing to be rescheduled, because that was a really serious flaw. The rest of them, they are arguable. The legality is seriously arguable, and I think going forward with this hearing today, you may end up with an illegal judge.
Okay. In terms of the notice to the public, we posted notice after it was submitted to the Record Center for Review. If you look at the notice, it tells you, it complies and it contains all of the information that's required by the State Rules Act, which was the time, date, place of hearing, and what the purpose of the hearing is, and what we would be doing, which is essentially adopting a, a default procedural rule for those agencies that don't have their own rules. I, you know, I don't know that there was much more in terms of a summary that we would provide beyond going much further than that.
My reading of what you posted was that you complied with the Rules Act prior to House Bill 58, that you do not comply with the standards after House Bill 58. Because some issues, there, there are, there are some major issues in, in this hearing. You've got three constituencies, three different constituencies, and I think where we differ is on three major points. It's that kind of descriptive text that would be so helpful to the public, and, and that's what the people who brought House Bill 58 hoped for, was to say, "Here's the proposal. These are the issues that are central, that you should pay attention to." It's that kind of guidance that they hoped for in their, in, in their notification, and it's not provided. You're complying with pre-House Bill 58, but we passed House Bill 58. The other thing is, the other thing you clearly could have provided, and I provided in one of my exhibits, was a description of how we got here. It's what House Bill 58 is about, so that the public can judge whether or not the proposed hearing protocol aids or diminishes House Bill 58. That's a serious issue, but the, the public in the main, unless they're provided with such information, they don't even know what House Bill 58 is. You had an opportunity to inform, to inform them of what House Bill 58 was, its history, et cetera. It was a serious effort. There was a task force that came up with that. There's, there's a really significant effort to change the path of governance on the Rules Act. All of that was not presented to the public. It, it could have been helpful, if it could have encouraged public, public participation. They don't even, the public doesn't even know this hearing is taking place. This is one of the most significant changes to open governance in this state in a long time, and the public basically doesn't know that it's going on. That's not what this is supposed to be about. House Bill 58 is about involving the public, and, and your failure to post this information just obstructs that.
Okay, thank you. So, just, just for the sake of clarity for the, the audience here today, I want to clarify that this hearing, well, one, I mean, we have a whole group of, of attorneys that, you know, are involved in this process, so we want to provide confidence that we have gone through the, the necessary steps that have been made, as, as have been noticed, too, and will be described in the final order that's adopted by the Attorney General if he chooses to adopt the rule. And also, just to clarify, so you all know what my role is here, I do not provide a recommendation. I do not provide a report. You know, in these rule hearings, this hearing is, is to receive public comment. My role is only to make sure that a hearing is conducted in an orderly fashion, and so that people have an opportunity to provide comment. So, if, if there's concerns about whether or not my opinion is, you know, whether or not your comments are valid, that's, my role is to ensure that your comments are, are introduced into the record, and that this hearing is conducted in a way that there's a clean record, so in case there's a judicial issue, we can provide the court with a clean record of the oral comments received. So, with that, we're going to go ahead and move on to Sections.
One further question. Just short, a short.
Okay, just one, please.
So, so I'm trying to say, is, is if someone raises an objection, as I just did, to the legality of what's, of what's perceived, set up this hearing is, you would not rule on that, who would?
Yeah, our office would look at any concerns that are raised, so. Okay, yeah, one last question, then we can move into the comments of today's hearing.
I will admit, by the way, I'm Peter St. Siratia, Foundation for Open Government, and I don't have a whole lot of experience in attending rulemaking hearings in, you know, this position that I'm at. As a former journalist, all the rulemaking hearings I've gone to that were public, they had an independent hearing officer, and the independent hearing officer collected not just the public comment, but testimony, and then applied independent critical thought in making a recommendation to the agency or the governing body that they were contracted and retained to. So under these untested procedures that are being used today, are there not, why are we not having an independent hearing officer?
Yeah, it's just a different process. We advise boards that have a process, that, and that's why I wanted to clarify my role as the hearing officer. For example, if House Bill 58 wasn't adopted last year, and the, and the Attorney General wanted to adopt rules, the Attorney General has other rulemaking promulgation authority. You know, that process, there's no rules to govern that process, so we would comply with due process requirements, we would follow the minimum requirements of the State Rules Act, but it doesn't involve a hearing officer that makes a recommendation. Similar environmental boards, you know, permitting boards, permits, things like that are different. So I don't want to get into that here, because the purpose of this hearing is to receive public comment, but I know Sally and I are able to answer questions. If you have questions generally about administrative law, I can say, you know, our division has probably close to 100 years of combined legal experience dealing with administrative law, especially in the State of New Mexico, so we're able to clarify that. But I, but for the sake of, of today's hearing, I want to get into the substantive public comments related to the proposed rules.
And I would just state for the record, but going forward, that with respect to the notice that was provided, and the legality of this particular hearing, that I'm confident that we have complied with the State Rules Act as amended by HB 58.
Okay, so with that, we're going to go ahead and move into the substance of the proposed rules. Okay. So with that, we're going to go ahead and move into the substance of the proposed rule for today's hearing. So we'll begin with the first few sections, which are very brief, Sections 1 through 5, which are all on the first page. So that'd be issuing agencies, scope, statutory authority, duration, and effective date. Just to clarify, we're doing the first five as a block, and then every section after that will receive comments, section by section. So would anyone like to comment on the proposed rule for Sections 1 through 5? Yes?
Matthew Ortiz, with regard to Section 5, the effective date, January 1st, 2018, that needs to be, that's still to be determined. And I reference you to the last sentence of subsection D of Statutory Section 14-4-5. "The effective date of a rule shall be the date of the publication in the New Mexico Register or later." And so in Section 5, that date is still to be determined, as well as the reference date on all of the history notes for all of the sections, not just Sections 1 through 5.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on that rule, or any other public comment for? And if you don't mind, just because you're in the back, if you could come forward. Fortunately, Mr. Ortiz was close enough, but I want to make sure that you pick up on the mic.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. So we'll just move forward and make things easier.
Yeah. And actually, just for Housekeeping, we have a recorder up here, and just to make sure that we have anyone, it would be more helpful if anyone came to the table to ensure that we got you on the mic.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I'll move forward here, cut my ears. Go ahead, sir.
Hey, if you don't mind stating your name.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Hearing Officer. Again, my name is TJ Terrio, Attorney of the Law for Gallagher &amp; Kennedy. As initially indicated, I'm here today on behalf of the Association of Commerce and Industry, the New Mexico Mining Association. I did give mention of one other constituency that will be talked about today, and that is the New Mexico Oil and Gas Association. In addition to the members of ACI, we did submit comments. And so just for purposes of turning the record, we did comment on Section 2 regarding the scope. I won't go into the details of self-explanatory in there, but just for purposes of clarification, the New Mexico Mining Association and the New Mexico Oil and Gas Association joined ACI in the comments regarding Section 2. We also compare with respect to, obviously, the Section 5 comments that were previously raised. Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments or questions regarding those public comments? Or are there additional public comments for Sections 1 through 5 of the proposed rule?
Yes, Mr. Charles, I'm, uh...
Section 2, yes.
Okay.
Basically the same concern. I think, and our submittals, I think both address that area. The question is why, yeah, because the important point we made there is that, is the fact that this adopts, that agents have to adopt their own procedural rules, and that these rules must provide at least as much opportunity for participation by parties and members of the public. That is very central. It's very important to the public interest. The question I have is, who rules on that adequacy? If it says, "Such rules must provide at least as much opportunity for participation by parties and members of the public," where can we turn when it's arguable whether it is equivalent? Because historically, with other such general rules, the answer as to who enforces them is nobody. So I think that should be addressed. There should be some, something should be provided to say, if this is, if it's arguable that someone does not provide that equal opportunity, then this is the remedy. Without a remedy, I'm not sure that rule will have the desired effect. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions on those public comments, or any additional comments on Sections 1 through 5?
Mr. Hearing Officer, I will follow up with an additional comment based on some of the comments that were provided. As was indicated in the opening comments, House Bill 58 was the basis for it. I personally had an opportunity to sit on the actual task force, worked on this stuff for over the course of about 10 years, leading up to the passage of House Bill 48. As a part of that process, not only in terms of Section 2, but I would submit these comments relative to, overall comments relative to all sections that my clients have commented on in the written submission. And that's it. Really, when you, when this effort regarding House Bill 58 was initiated and started, and again, this particular portion of House Bill 58 just deals with the rulemaking context. But if you, when this effort first started, this effort was modeled after the Uniform Law Commission's Administrative Procedures Act. It was the Model Act that the committees that met and dealt with this really followed very closely. If you compare side by side, and for purposes of an evidentiary basis, I can give you the reference to, the Uniform Law Commission would encourage the Attorney General's Office to do the side by side comparison. And really, House Bill 58 was the work of a bipartisan effort, multiple people discussing the issues, and really trying to stick as closely as possible to the Model Administrative Procedures Act adopted by the Uniform Law Commission. The reason why that was important over time was that New Mexico is, up until the passage of House Bill 58, really the only state that did not have a generally applicable set of rulemaking and adjudicatory procedures. In other words, just letting each agency adopt their own rulemaking and adjudicatory administrative procedures. House Bill 58 was important in order to be able to start to provide a step in the consistency. The sponsors of the legislation chose a piecemeal approach, in this case, just focusing on the rulemaking. We don't have the same consistency on the adjudicatory processes, which hopefully the New Mexico Legislature will address at some point. I raise those comments because in ACI's comments that were submitted in the adjoining groups, this particular set of default rules is meant to act as the baseline or minimum, minimum public participation. The hope is that each agency will then start to promulgate their own set of procedural rules dealing with rulemaking, using this as a baseline mechanism. Because of that, we believe it is imperative that, in Section 2, the last sentence, this is in addition, if an agency adopts some procedural rules or continues to affect its existing rules, they should provide as least as much public participation or opportunity for the public to participate. But to address some of the comments, I believe that once these rules are adopted, then it is imperative that each agency, board, commission, governmental entity, take a look at their rulemaking processes and expand to include more participation by the public, as was indicated. Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions regarding that public comment? Or any additional public comment on Sections 1 through 5? Yes, Mr. Charles?
I have a question about, which perhaps should have raised earlier, but I raise it now at the beginning of this process. I would prefer, and I'm not sure what the response would be, that when, and it isn't some other boards and agencies in this state, that the party bringing the changes is available for questions. There is no opportunity such as that provided in this hearing. This, I think it would be very healthy if someone from the Attorney General's Office, who was presenting this, make themselves available for questions as to, "Why did you choose this path?" As opposed to this path. I think that would be an opportunity for the public to understand what you've done. That's not provided. I think it should be provided. It'd be a very important access issue for the public. It's very frustrating to have the state bring forward changes and never explain them. If you don't explain them in the, if you don't explain them, and we've just already discussed the adequacy of your notice, if you don't explain, if you don't have an opportunity to question your rationale during what we're doing right now, and the only chance you get, and hopefully that will work out, is when the Attorney General explains what he did at the end, and that's still unclear that that will happen, is, you've basically created a process where the public doesn't get adequate notice, they don't have an opportunity to question during the hearing, and they don't get an adequate explanation. You've shut them out. That's exactly what House Bill 58 is trying to correct. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding that public comment, or any additional public comment on Sections 1 through 5? Okay, yes.
Well, we see this as an opportunity for the state of New Mexico to set a higher bar. And that the word "default," minimum standards of procedures, shouldn't be a low bar, but it should be a high bar. So we would encourage you to listen to Mr. Meckels, to Ms. Petrichio, to the Center for Law and Poverty, and really take an independent look at the feedback that you're getting, so that we set the bar at a higher level. The default can be a higher level. And it's a great opportunity for New Mexico to move beyond, you know, being the low grade that we always get around the states.
Seeing no further comment, we're going to move to Section 6. So at this point, we'll go section by section through the remaining, I believe, nine sections of the proposed rule, and we'll allow public comment. First, for sake of efficiency and clarity, I'd like to try to have one public comment from each person on the bill or on each section. So we don't necessarily have, you know, a limit, but I'd like, if we can, organize your comments to be given at one time during each section. And then obviously, if there's rebuttal or questions regarding other public comments, we certainly allow for that. Okay. So moving forward, next section is Section 6, Objective. Would anyone like to comment on Section 6? Yes, and please, again, state your name for the record.
Matthew Ortiz, Section 6, the first line, we would, I would recommend that you delete the phrase "rulemaking and." And I would reference you to the Statutory Authority, the direction given in 1445.8. "The Attorney General shall adopt default procedural rules for public rule hearings for use by agencies that have not adopted their own procedural rules consistent with the State Rules Act." Eliminating that phrase "rulemaking and" eliminates any kind of potential conflict that arises because, under the State Rules Act, authority for rulemaking, form and style, is given to the State Records Administrator. And so deleting that phrase "rulemaking as" clarifies the direction given under statute to the Attorney General's Office, and also eliminates any potential conflict that this particular rule may have with the rules that have already been promulgated by the State Rules Administrator
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments on those public comments? Or are there additional comments on Section 6?
Mr. Hearing Officer, I reserve the right to comment here later on Section 6, as I'm pulling up the statute on that. I may not have a comment, but I would just reserve the right to. We'll come back.
Sure. And that's, at the end of the hearing, we'll give a final opportunity if there's something that ties in with a prior section. So we can certainly do that. Okay. Any further comments or questions related to that comment on Section 6? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next section, Section 7, Definitions. Would anyone like to comment on Section 7?
Okay. Thank you. Just so purposes, if we did submit written comments, by us not commenting, saying we stand by everything, these written comments will still stand. We did have a comment on Section 7, but just to save time, I didn't want to be representative.
Yes. Yeah, and we can certainly reference any written comment that's been received thus far in your oral comments, but that, even if you don't mention it, these have already been reviewed and will be thoroughly reviewed by our office before, you know, in considering any amendments or edits to the proposed rule.
May I? With regard to definitions in the rules, one of the things that the training from the State Record Center has discouraged is for agencies that are adopting rules to repeat definitions that are already found in the statute, and that's why they're not included. I personally, working with an agency, would prefer to dump the statutory definitions into a rule just for purposes of having everything in one place. I agree with that. But the directive that's come from the State Record Center is that that not be done, and that if the statutory definition is, if it's in the statute, then that's what we're governed by, and it shouldn't be repeated in the rule. So that's one of the reasons why it's not here. Personally, I would prefer it, but that's not what we're doing.
I have a comment, if I might.
Okay.
The comment I make in that is, in this case, I'm afraid that I agree with the Record Center. The reason is, I think the reason, the reason that such a position, it's arguable, certainly. I have some sympathy for saying is, it's clarifying to have it in line. But if, what I encountered going through the Attorney General's proposal in this case was, the language that was provided within the proposal, in some cases, does not even agree with the language of the statute. That's the kind of problem you come up with when you put the, when you repeat the language. It's hard to keep them current. That, so I would say, in fact, in our written proposal, I suggested that some of the texts you have in line, which is already taken from the statute itself, is inconsistent with the statute. That's the problems I come up with that. I'm sympathetic to the Records, I'm sympathetic to the Record Center. Because, yes, it does read better, but the consistency is a real problem. It shouldn't, maybe it shouldn't be in this age of computers, but it is. So I would be, so in my proposal, so my written comments, I propose actually removing text that's proposed because already the consistency problem is present in that proposal.
Okay, we're still on Section 7, just to clarify for the record. Are there any additional questions related to public comment submitted thus far, or additional public comment related to Section 7? Yes.
Matthew Ortiz, I'm in agreement with Section 7 as proposed, and I reference you to the language in Section B, subsection B of Section 1445.7 of the State Rules Act. "A word or phrase that is defined in an applicable statute should not be defined in rule. A conflict between a definition that appears in a rule and in an applicable statute is resolved in favor of the statute." And so I agree that the proposed Section 7 is a cleaner, conciser recitation of how definitions should be in a rule where there are no other definitions except to be found in rule.
Thank you. Okay. Any?
I'll follow up coming, if I may.
Okay.
I mean, I, I agree, I agree with, I'm with Matt in principle, but I think in practice, if someone encounters this language, and they don't know about the language you just cited, that the statute preamps, it may cause confusion. Thank you.
Any, any final comments or questions regarding the comments submitted thus far for section seven definitions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next section, which is section eight, agency adoption of procedural rules. Would anyone like to comment on the proposed rule under section eight?
Mr. Michelle, if I could, go ahead.
I've got the same comment I had on section two. My consideration, my concern there, which is much the same, same language there, is the, the question is, who did, the question, at least as much opportunity is arguable. We need some way to resolve that and to, and to come behind that and ensure that it happens. Some enforcement, some way, some way of ensuring some level of compliance rather than just good rule. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions regarding the public comment received for section eight, or any additional public comment for section eight? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next section, which is section nine, initiating of the rulemaking, excuse me, initiation of the rulemaking process petitions. I'll go ahead and open the floor if there's anyone who has a public comment regarding section nine. Yes, Mr. Ortiz.
Matthew Ortiz, I won't, I will just refer to the same comments that I made with respect to section six. In addition, in section nine, the, the proposed rule is outside the scope of the statutory direction given to the Attorney General's office. The language in section nine is duplicative of statutory requirements that are already found in the State Rules Act. And so according to subsection A of 1445.7, no rule is valid or enforceable if it conflicts with statute. My suggestion would be that the Attorney General's office consider striking in hold all of section nine. The last point that I make is section nine, in part, not in total, may conflict with the statutory authority that's given to the State Records Administrator pursuant to section 1443 subsection A, and the rules that have been promulgated under that authority, namely 1.24.10 NMAC and 1.24.15 NMAC.
Thank you. Are there other comments in response or question to, comments received thus far, or additional? David, I know you've been, you came up, do you want to?
Well, mine's a little convoluted, so.
So mine's gonna be too, sorry.
Okay. My name's David Lapp, Associate General Counsel for the, for the Mexico Public Regulation Commission. I can sit next to you, both of you gentlemen.
Sure got a down table.
I made reference to 1.24.25.9C, and two other proposed rule sections, 1.24.25.10B3, and finally 1.24.25.13F. I'm not sure where these languages, where this language specifically comes from. From the first one, 9C, the language refers to, quote, "legal authority authorizing the agency to adopt the rule." Section 10B3 refers to "specific legal authority authorizing the adoption of the proposed rule." And section 13F refers to, quote, "specific legal authority authorizing the rule." The way I've analyzed these three sections is that there are two types of legal authority required under the State Rules Act as amended in 2017. There are, if you will, procedural legal authority statutes and laws, and there are substantive subject matter as to that specific rule, legal authority under the statutes. It appears, and I haven't done this comparison, but it appears that the, the language contained in 9C, 10B3, and 13F closely track the language in the State Rules Act. The State Rules Act therefore is also ambiguous. The question is, the question is, do we need to tighten up the quote-unquote "legal authority" to actually set it out and make it clear that, yes, for instance, in our case, the Public Regulation Commission has the authority to promulgate rules under this set of statutes and laws. And then as to this specific rule, yes, the Public Regulation Commission has authority to promulgate a rule on this specific matter having to do with investor-owned electrical utilities, integrated resource plans. We have a general statutory authority, but that does not mean we can regulate everything in that purview, everything having to do with utilities. No. There are specific areas that we may regulate. So in other words, what I'm trying to do is, is it possible in the rule, or even if it's necessary, to make clear that both the authority to promulgate rules as rules, statutory authority, legal pointed authorities, must be stated, and the specific actual subject matter of that rule, the substantive portion of the rule, has to be supported by actual statutory authority. Both, or one, or sometimes one and sometimes the other. Not sure. Not sure, but as I say, I haven't done the research. I think that the rule is tracking the language of the statute. This is something that I raised at the committee hearings level before it became law and was not addressed by the ultimate statute. So with that, I'll spin out.
Just to, because I want to make sure that the record's clear, just a clarifying question. The concern is that, for example, the Attorney General's office, the Attorney General has rule promulgation authority, but you may question his authority to promulgate rules in a specific subject matter.
Correct.
And you want to make sure that not only their promulgation authority is cited, but also the subject matter in reference to that specific rule is cited.
Yes, and more precisely, section 9C has to do with the initiation process of a rulemaking. So in that, it's, it actually appears to be, the language in that appears to be having to do with only the procedural power to promulgate rules. With section 10B3, which refers to a notice of proposed rulemaking, that, that language, "specific legal authority authorizing the adoption of the proposed rule," appears to be only addressing the subject matter of the rule, and not the authority to promulgate rules. And finally, section 13F, which specific language is "specific legal authority authorizing the rule," also only, it appears to be only intending to refer to the subject matter or substantive power of the, of the agency to do that. None of either, none of these three combined them all together to make sure that a concise explanatory statement in a rulemaking record must contain both types. It's hit or miss, sometimes procedural, sometimes substantive, never both.
It's a good catch, thank you. Yes?
Mr. Hearing Officer, again, TJ Trillo, Gallagher, Kennedy. If you reference, I'm gonna not be duplicative in terms of going through all the comments that my clients have proposed on sections nine, and in fact, what we did was actually proposed a new section 10 to be included. I will add though, for purposes of the record, from an evidentiary standpoint, again, my previous comments mentioned that Hospital 58 was based off of the Model Administrative Procedures Act. And if you go section by section of the rulemaking portion of the Model Administrative Procedures Act, you will see Hospital 58, again, mimics it. The one area that was left for the default rules dealt with the initiation of a rulemaking process. If you look at the Model Administrative Procedures Act, there's really two ways to initiate a rulemaking, and there's, and I would basically classify it into two different parties. One, it would be an agency itself initiating the rulemaking process, and two, members of the public initiating the rulemaking process. The proposed section nine, I would say conflates everything into somewhat of a confusion as to, well, what happens if an agency proceeds for, what happens if a third party? I think for purposes of clarity, there should be two distinct processes, because remember that the purpose of Hospital 58 was to provide consistency. Members of the public, including many of the businesses that ACI represents, if you tried to participate in rulemaking proceedings, everyone up until Hospital 58, you know, provided guidance that we gotta get some consistency, you'd step into one rulemaking proceeding, and they'd use a very different set of rulemaking procedures than another agency, and as, as a business community, it's very costly and very difficult to navigate the administrative bureaucracy in such a case. If 49 other states have these processes, why not New Mexico? Why does New Mexico have to be different in, in this case? With that being said, I, I do think that there is clear authority under 50, under Hospital 58 for the Attorney General as part of the default rules to provide the minimum baseline as to what shall occur. And the proposed section nine that ACI proposes, effectively what the rule is designed to do is to continue forward with the notice and comment procedures, and allow an agency just to initiate the rulemaking to be able to proceed forward. I would say probably 90%, if not more, of the boards, commissions, and agencies that engage in rulemaking follow this existing procedure. There are some differences with some boards and commissions, for instance, in the natural resources section, the Water Quality Control Commission has, has a process where constituent agencies have to file a petition as referenced in here, I believe the Mining Commission does, the Environmental Improvement Board, the Oil Conservation Commission, and there may be some others that I'm missing, but I would say predominantly, most of the agencies that do engage in rulemaking in New Mexico follow, follow what I would call a notice and comment process, and in this case, the proposed section nine, I would say, is the closest to mimic what the Model Administrative Procedures Act sets for, and that is, if an agency wants to initiate it, they provide notice of, consistent with Hospital 58 and some of the new requirements, the substance of rule, and is able to proceed forward. However, we believe that there should be a different process for members of the public to initiate it, and I will tell you that many agencies do not have any guidance whatsoever as to how a member of the public can proceed forward and initiate a rulemaking proceeding, and what their rights and remedies are. The Model Administrative Procedures Act clearly puts forward a process to do so as a baseline requirement. Mr. Hearing Officer, section 10, proposed by my clients, I would say basically mimics it and tries to tie it into what New Mexico law is. We believe that's important, it's that the public needs to understand, be it business, be it a retired person, be it anyone that wants to participate, we believe that they should be able to propose to the state of New Mexico and the regulatory bodies, they're an integral part of that process, what kind of rulemakings they should do. And there's several advantages that I won't go into that are recognized nationally as to why it's important to have a citizen petition process be able to be the bedrock for the public to participate. Otherwise, no rulemaking changes occur unless the agency board or commission initiate it themselves. It's a cost savings thing, because then if, if the members of the public decide that there's an important enough public policy through a rule that they need to address, public can, can take up the burden from an economic perspective of initiating the rule, supporting it, providing the necessary evidence to be able to do it, and that administrative cost does not rest with the agency. But in some cases, the agency may decide that the agency needs to promulgate new rules or amend rules, and in that case, if they feel it's important to do so, they can expend agency resources to be able to make those necessary policy changes. With that, Mr. Hearing Officer, I would tell you that we believe that this, especially the proposed section 10, set forth on page three of the comments submitted by my clients, has to be probably one of the most critical issues set forth in these default rules. The whole purpose of initiating Hospital 58 was to create the consistency and the transparency, and to make this an easier process for members of the public to be able to participate, give them a clear path to be able to put forth public policy issues. We would encourage the Attorney General's office to bifurcate and have two different processes to initiate it. One, by an agency, be clear as to what an agency needs to do, and two, if a member of the public would like to initiate a public rule hearing and propose changes to those particular rules, that you have a separate section that outlines how members of the public can do it, so as members of the public will want to proceed forward, they can clearly go to one place and understand exactly how they can do it. Thank you, Mr. Hearing Officer.
May I ask one clarifying question with that? Would it, are you arguing then with, with those public comments that the rules without statutory authority could grant a substantive right?
Can you clarify that one more, say that one more time?
So I think a question that can come up with this that we do need to clarify for the record too, is whether or not rules could grant a substantive right without statutory authorization, because the boards that you reference that have petition rights are granted through statute, and there's nothing in the State Rules Act that states about providing a statutory right, and so I think that that's part of that conversation regarding this, and I just wanted to get clarity for the record, if that is in fact what.
Mr. Hearing Officer, I would actually disagree with that. I would say some of those boards and commissions that I referenced that have a petition right were actually granted, that petition right was set forth by a rule, not by statute in and of, in and of itself. That's part of the, the reason for being able to have this. I would argue that there absolutely is a right for the Attorney General, and the Attorney General has perfect statutory authority under 58 to proceed, making sure that there's a consistent and clear petition process for members of the public to participate. Otherwise, we continue in New Mexico to remove from most of the regulatory bodies any way for a member of the public to be able to initiate any kind of rulemaking. I can tell you in the tax area, I've had multiple clients that have asked, that we want to change a rule, clean it up, let's make this clearer in there, you have no ability to do so. It remains solely at the discretion of the tax department. I can proceed down multiple agencies with the same thing. This issue is what excludes the public from being able to participate in a meaningful Well more than the majority of states have adopted such a process that's set forth in the Model Administrative Procedures Act. Why does New Mexico have to be different? My clients maintain and is set forth, and I won't, again, continue to reiterate anything that I put in there, but the fact is, New Mexico is the outlier of public participation. You need a clear process to do it. You need a clear process to do it, 58 provides that process. If there's any questions, and I can understand and appreciate, and appreciate what agencies are going through of, okay, we have our organic statute that sits there, now we have this new rule. As 58 went through the process, I think the three sponsors of it, Representative Gentry, Senator Ivy Soto, and Representative Trillo, clearly explained that if you go to the Uniform Statute and Rules Construction Act, that's what they were referencing during the legislative hearings, that if there is any conflict between the previous statutes and this, their belief was that the default rules and that catch-all language in the default rules to give the Attorney General the opportunity to put something together so that the public has a clear path to be able to participate. With that, they don't. I would argue that you can rely on that legislative history. Under the Uniform Statute and Rules Construction Act, there is clearly a section in there that says, as you're interpreting these things, you can look at legislative history. It's, and I can provide the site if necessary, but that is in there, that's what the sponsors intended, is Hospital 58, was to make sure that the Attorney General sets the baseline for public participation. And the proposed Section 10, by my clients, I believe, comports with that legislative history as to what was expected to be able to go forth on the default rules.
Thank you. Are there any, specifically, first off, since there's a lot to kind of under with that, are there any, hold on one second, are there any comments or questions specific first to the public comment immediately received, and then we'll go into additional public comment for the same section? Okay.
I have a question. I have a question, Mr. Ortiz. Sir, I really appreciate your position in this. There is one point, though, there are basically three different sets of markups to the Attorney General's proposal, and the proposal from you, that you represent, is different from the other two, and as I would describe it in the following way. We're proposing a one-size-fits-all, we all agree, that we, that the public should have a right to petition. We're not, we agree on that, and I'll speak to that in a moment. But as far as the question to you is, would a one-size-fits-all approach, such as we have proposed, meet your concerns, and if not, why not?
Mr. Hearing Officer, this is where I would agree with one of the comments that was submitted previously about my client's extending the, I think it would be appropriate, and we would request that there be a consideration to extend the public comment period. This often happens in notice and comment rulemaking where I, I'll get into my point here in a second, I haven't had a chance to review all the different proposals, just due to the timing and nature of what occurs. I would answer the question by saying, I think the fundamental tenets are correct, that there should be a public right to petition. The agency, there's different ways to draft it, I haven't had a chance to see if there's any real substantive difference, but my guess is there probably is not any real substantive difference, and to be able to extend the comment period, I'd say would provide the parties an opportunity to see if there's a reconciliation process on some of these key points for maybe an extension of a week to two weeks, to allow people to some additional comments in response to other parties' comments, maybe something that is beneficial, I don't think is necessarily crucial, but it may allow the Attorney General's Office to find some common ground in the proposals that were submitted. Sitting on, and with this comment, sitting on the task force that really resulted in Hospital 58, it was surprising by me to find that you get a bunch of different constituencies, and ultimately you end up finding that people really do have very common ground on these ways you want to participate in government, especially in the rulemaking process. So, I would encourage an extension of the public comment period so that folks can comment on each other's proposals that have been put together, and see if there can be some common ground reached in terms of making it easier for the Attorney General's to have, Office to have a even better rule with some of the issues that were raised.
Thank you.
Mr. Michelle, for clarity, when you say "we," beyond yourself, when you made your comment there, the one that we offered, you're speaking on behalf of?
I'm looking at the proposals that have been put forth, I have a printout of all the comments.
Okay.
So, I can, I've seen his proposal. I hope today that you would have a printing of the comments available in this room for the participants, and I think it's a failure on your part not to do so. It would, it would make this kind of conversation much more accessible. So, so when I say "we," I say, I say two other proposals, I say another proposal, that one brought by the Poverty Law Center, which seems to be in agreement with my one-size-fits-all, basically, which I would say also is, is a proposal that I see is one of the more outstanding, let's say, hearing processes that I've encountered, it was when I was working with the law enforcement, with the Environmental Improvement Board.